To order in this city council meeting via Zoom. Thanks for everybody participating. We've got several folks that is going to be on Zoom tonight, and we will introduce them accordingly when it's time for their, for their segment to come up. So at this time, if you will stand for prayer and then remain suspended before the play. Dear gracious heavenly father, we thank for this day and all the many blessings. We thank you for allowing us once again as a city council to come in and make decisions. And we pray that we do this in accordance to thy will. We pray for our doctors, our scientists, or CDC, the folks that are trying to come up with a vaccine cure for this dreaded virus called COVID-19. We pray for the sick and especially the ones that is close to us. And a special prayer for the ones that have health issues due to the coronavirus. We pray that if it be thy will, you make them healthy again. Or we pray for men and women serving the country, especially the ones on foreign soil, that you will put their hand around and bring them back home safe and sound, or if it be thy will. We pray for the families that have lost loved ones. Comfort them as only you know how. Again, we just thank you so much, and we pray for the wisdom and guidance. Forgive us of our sins. Christ, amen. All right. Chief Etheridge, you lead us in pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you, chief. Okay, roll call, Ms. Phillips.
Alderman Klatt?
Did you hit your button?
Here.
Alderman Klatt?
Here.
Alderman Dale?
Present.
Vice Mayor Dotson?
Here.
Alderman Lightford?
Here.
Alderman Spitt?
Here.
Okay, all presents leave a motion to approve the minutes of last month's meeting.
Uh, move.
Motion made by Alderman Kelly Klattens and a second by Rex Dale. Any discussion? For the motion, we're going to do a roll call vote on all of them, and I ask each board member or anybody participate. Please state your name for the record and then proceed with your, with the program here. So roll call for the approval of the minutes. Ms. Phillips, please.
Alderman Spitt?
Alderman Spitt, yes.
Alderman Klatt?
Alderman Klatt, yes.
Alderman Klatt?
Alderman Klatt, yes.
Alderman Dale?
Alderman Dale, yes.
Vice Mayor Dotson?
Vice Mayor Dotson, yes.
Alderman Lightford?
Alderman Lightford, yes.
Motion passed.
Motion, motion passed. Addition or deletions to the agenda, I do have one from Livingston Police Department. Chief Greg Etheridge, I think you got some paperwork or some emails late in the day on that. I'm asking to add Chief Greg Etheridge in Livingston Police Department as item number seven under new business. Is there others? Is there any other additions or deletions? If there's no other additions, I'll entertain a motion to add LPD Chief Greg Etheridge to the agenda, please. Motion made by Vice Mayor Ken Dotson.
Alderman Dale, second.
Second by Alderman Rex Dale. Any discussion? Roll call vote, Ms. Phillips.
Alderman Klatt?
Alderman Klatt, yes.
Alderman Klatt?
Alderman Klatt, yes.
Alderman Dale?
Alderman Dale, yes.
Vice Mayor Dotson?
Vice Mayor Dotson, yes.
Alderman Lightford?
Alderman Lightford, yes.
Alderman Spitt?
Alderman Spitt, yes.
So item number seven will be LPD Chief Greg Etheridge. So that it leave us, make us seven items, so we have nothing under old business. So we'll go into new business, item number one downtown revitalization. Mr. Ray Evans?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
We have four items denied. The T-DOT multi-vehicle access grant, T-DOT. We want to roll the call, script, we're so long. East R and S-Maine. We have received the draft to the final construction plan from a consultant. We have reviewed those and we have submitted comment back to the consultant. Waiting out on, on your response. We're still anticipating Ray. We can't, construction start on that.
Yeah, Ray, I, I, I.
Second project is the D-DOT.
Yeah, Ray, if you can hear me, you're cutting out really, really bad. I hate to ask you to repeat that again, but I'm going to have to, have to do that because I, I can barely understand it. I don't think anybody else can too. So could you please start all over again? Please, thank you.
Yes. So the first project is our T-DOT multi-vehicle access grant. That is what's up and puts along each draw in S-Maine. We have received the, I was certain the consultant. We have reviewed those documents and have added comments to the consultant. And we are waiting for your response.
All right.
Better, is that clear?
No. Can, can any board members understand Ray at all?
Well.
Okay, the, the answer is no. Ray, I, I need you to call in the, the 1-800 number. Have you, have you got that? I can give it to you. Rebecca?
I'll send it to you right now.
Okay, check your phone and we're going to send it. Okay, we're going to send it to you right now and I want to come back to you, okay? All right, Rebecca's either emailing it or texting it to you right now. Thank you. All right, item number two, Mr. Jason Duke. Is Jason on the Zoom call? Very hard to see him, Jason.
Hi, I am.
All right, go ahead, Jason.
All right, I'm going to give an update on the airport. We have several new offers since my last presentation. There is not a request asked of this at all. It's more informational. Kind of catch you up on this bit of the airport and kind of what's going on. So I'll do some screen sharing, but it says the host is disabled for this of the screen sharing.
All right, we're going to take care of that right now.
All right. So I had a nice darkened off presentation of some photos and kind of walk everyone through what we have going on now and some past projects, proposed future projects.
Jason, you can, you can go ahead and go on. The board members have, they, we sent that out. The board members have it in their packet, so just continue on and while we try to.
Okay, I got it. I'll hop in.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, are we good?
Yes, sir. Good.
All right. That's just the night photos in our runway. I like the night photos. It's so peaceful at night. Can't see what I'm going to hit my crutch. All right, still through this. First stop, the man in the airport, most you know, Edna, and her daughter Mandy, your assistant manager. I serve as airport board chairman. That's an unpaid position. I've been on the airport boards since 2002 and been chair of us since 2016 after Johnny Haverford passed. Our airport is owned 50% by the town of Livingston and 50% by Overton County. So our airport, as we noted now, was constructed in 1959. We had an airport prior to that, some buildings around town. I'm worried about that, but the current airport was built in 59. It was a 3,000-foot runway at the time. At the time, that was a long runway, but now it's not. So in 84, we expanded to 4,100 feet. And currently, it's just almost a mile long, 5,100 feet until 2007. Major projects you will ever hear me talk about are the folks, the airport. We have a north area. I'll show you photos in a minute. We expanded that in 2009 and 10. We built the T-hanger, which on the side is named after Johnny Haverford in 2012 and 13. We have another pad to build a future T-hanger on, which is parallel to that current hangar. And then we just now finished what's called the April rehabilitation. We rehabilitated the 1959 original pavements that had been worked up numerous times. And it's just now being wrapped up in our engineering cannon some year. Think you speak to that as well when I'm done.
Yeah, Ray, can you, Ray, can you mute your phone, please? Ray Evans, can you mute? Ray, can you mute your phone, please? Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Jason.
Okay. This is real quick, a 1997 arrow photo of the airport. If you look at the very south end of the runway, there below the number three. If you were to come from the south end, would it not rub out the black arrow? That shows where the runway went to as of 84. So from that arrow north was the expansion did in 1984. Move on here. 2007, we added about 1,000 feet to the runway. So if you look at the very top right of that photo, you can see where Bill White Lane was moved to the north around that. That is during the time of construction. So you can see we added, now our airport is as long as we physically can make the runway. Unless one of you can make that piece, the plateau, start to grow. So our length is as long as it can go. Yes, down the road, we could make the runway rock wider, but everyone wasn't allowed or permitted by Mandy. But we can't go any longer unless we can make the plateau start a little longer.
Hey, Jason, your, your video, your slideshow, can you try to reboot it? It's not showing anything.
It's working fine for me.
Okay, all right. Has all the board members, do none of the board members see it? Okay?
Yes.
Carry on. It's not showing here that it may be on our end. Thank you.
Okay.
Continue.
This is the most recent arrow photo from Google Earth of the airport. And I drew on here, sorry, I did some nice fine art here with PowerPoint. But I wanted to draw a few lines to give you some ideas when we're talking about things. So if you look on the east side of the runway, the yellow line there, that line is the approximate boundary that we're working on a new fence area. Our current major project is fencing. And this is a big fence. You got to think, this runway is almost a mile long. So when you figure all the airport property, Ray, you can give us the length probably. But you're looking at it easily, over two, like three or four miles of fence. And so we have what are called safety and security issues because some of the whole airport fence is not much more than barbed wire fence. And for example, Dr. Ragland hit a season coyote and deer. We've had numerous aircraft strikes in the past with wildlife, because we have turkeys, deer, you name it, coyotes in the runway vicinity. We've had a wildlife study conducted, which came up with a conclusion of the new height of the fence. A 50-foot setback that Ray can speak to in the future. And we have some trees in other areas that are, and the FAA considers to be a safety threat due to the fact of the large wildlife concentration near the airport. And he and I have had a few near misses. And there's nothing scarier than loading family of taking off an airplane and cracking deer with an airplane takeoff. It's not very fun at all. And so I want to point out a few things up at the arrow there. You can see right at the 2013 T-hanger, when we refer to the new hanger. I know it's seven years old now. That's the new hanger we have aircraft in. And the arrow showing future T-hanger, when we built that, most recently built hanger in 2013, the pad was prepared for an additional hanger. We have a waiting list that would fill that hanger. We have numerous people in the community asking for the hanger to be built. But note, most of our projects are built on 95% state and federal funding, and we only have 5% to make up. The state does not consider revenue generating projects as a major priority for them at the moment. So which meant if we wanted to build that hanger right now, we would have to pay for the entire amount of the hanger. And we're not going to retool the cost of that hanger we have to pay in full for most of our lifetimes at all. And so down the road, there's a good chance that the state will once again allow us to prioritize projects like that like we did on the current hanger and get either a 90-10 match or a 95-5 match. Now, the orange line drawn on there, that's an approximation. That's just a estimate of where we have a future taxiway. I want to just say this real quick. Most of you are used to taking off, say, from Nashville or Knoxville. We have a parallel taxiway that builds all the way downside the runway. Livingston Airport has a nice runway, but the length of the runway only has about 1,000 feet of a parallel taxiway. So when you are taking off, heading to the south, look where the number 2-1 is the top right. If I'm taking off to the south, I have to take my airplane out of the terminal and do what's called back taxiing. I go in turn left against oncoming traffic for 4,000 feet and watch incoming aircraft. That is an issue for us, an issue down the road, which requires us to do a parallel taxiway. But if you look where we drew the orange line, the reason why the orange line estimate doesn't run the length of the taxiway is because of the road there called Bill White Lane. And so that's a whole different issue we're not going to talk about at the moment. But if you look where I wrote the word potential commercial hangers. We have numerous people contact us frequently interested in building commercial hangers or large personal hangers. A lot of those are commercial. We do not have any suitable land around current airports that we feel we can use. Our engineer agrees for hangers, but that potential commercial hanger area is a large piece of land, very suitable for future growth of the airport, but we do not have any access to it right now by aircraft. And that additional taxiway in the future would open up that entire area and give you road access off Bill White Lane decks. And you ask why this is an issue? You want the airport to be self-supporting. You want the airport to bring in enough money to pay for itself and even possibly get a return in the city and the county itself. To do that, you're going to have to get more business development and on the airport property. I'll give you an example. I fly my airplane in Fayetteville, Tennessee for all avionics service. Avionics service is 10 to 30,000 dollars in time sometimes. I take it there, an airport no bigger than Livingston because they, the city and county there, gave access to an avionics shop to build in a small town. Places like we are are perfect places for mechanics, for avionics shops, for paint shops. They want airports like ours. We have a nice long runway, it's in great condition. We have a lot of land available for future development, but you have to have a taxiway, not a road, a taxiway to get to. So those are, you can see too from the lines I drew, that shows where the airport ended in 84, 2007, and current runway ends. People ask me all the time, how is our airport compared to airports in the area around us? If you look north of 540, other than Fayette, in our immediate area, we have the longest runway. You know, Jamestown and Jamesboro are just 3,500 feet. That's an open prayer and anything bigger than a small plane, 3,500 feet. Our runway can handle the average small jet, the average turbo throttle is going to land there. We have a pretty good length runway. If you want to compare us to larger airports, Crossville Airport is just, you know, 250 feet longer than ours. It's 100 foot wide or 75 feet wide. And then Upper Compton, which on Cook Building, started a wide airport, I'll call it, is 6,700 feet. So that gives you a pretty good feeling. And also another town about the size of our Smithville is 4,000 feet. Why is that number important? I know I'm bored with details. 5,000 feet's the magic number. If you have a small jet and you're insured, you're going to fly parts in from Hutchinson or somewhere like that to a town, you want 5,000-foot runway. That's the magic number. Who uses Livingston Airport? You know what I hear all the time? I'm just a bunch of rich folks, just a country club. We don't need that place. Let's get rid of it and sell it, you know? If you spend a day in there, you're going to be amazed who's coming in there. You've got Hutchinson flying parts in all the time. You've got the Family Dollar having folks in the state staff fly in. The Highway Patrol, now you've had numerous doctors fly in, Fitzgerald and lots of other businesses. On a weekend, you're going to see three to six planes parked there for folks coming to visit their folks on Del Halle Lake. Those folks spend money in our community and in our restaurants and buy things in our grocery stores. Airyback Plaza King Air in there, military use helicopters there. And TSU uses it quite a bit for pilot training and numerous, numerous private pilots, a lot more folks here than. We have a spring and fall when COVID's not going on, Community Day flying. We have a car show. We have a big flying. We have food. We have, I give airplane rides. I'll weird you with airplane rides. On average, I will give rides to a hundred people every time we have that with two, three planes going. We estimated that in the county, almost 1,000 people going to our events. It's a really big community event to show the airport and show the community this is a place welcome for all. School groups, I give an air leadership open class in the last probably 10 years touring the airport, talks through that. And Jason Kumpf, the aerospace class. So our last few slides are our current projects, just kind of updates on what's going on. So all the current projects are 95-5, I mentioned earlier. And what I call a long year, they're 90-10. And those, the state and federal government pays for 90%. When someone comes up to you and says, you know, that project's a waste, if we didn't have that money, we saved it elsewhere. The money that we get from the state and federal government comes off of airplane fuel, sales taxes. And it also comes off of taxes paid when I buy a commercial block in here in Los Angeles. I pay a tax on that as well, which goes into the system where the national airport gets unlocked. A piece goes into a pot that we don't share. So we're getting money from that. When I buy airplane gas, we pay quite a bit of tax per gallon, and that's funding that too. That's where that 95-5 split's coming from. And the remaining is split between Overton County itself, but also the county commission, and then the town of Livingston. So our two major projects, the April rehabilitation project is just now completed. Final paperwork to hearing on that, and that's wrapping up. Our security fencing project is rather extensive. When it runs across the east side of the runway, you're talking about 3,000 feet of runway alone and then some other areas. So we may even talk more on that. We have a recent wildlife study I mentioned that recommended an additional 50-foot buffer. So they're going to be able to mow and have additional 50 feet on the outside of the fence to maintain that. We have appraisings that have to be performed and land acquisition in 2021. I know there are at least five landowners on the east side of runway. And also, that's going to push us into 2022 for clearing of the area, installation of the fence. We haven't been helped by the pandemic. We haven't been helped by weather conditions in the past. So this project takes some time. I believe the latest request was to limit the fence from six to eight feet, because all of you have seen the deer jump the six-foot fence. Our last thing here are potential future projects. There's quite a demand for additional T-hanger. I believe the last waiting list I saw, that Edna and Mandy called and confirmed the people on that list to verify one hanger will see the 10 or 12 people. The average hanger will hold 10 aircraft, which means you could build an additional hanger right now. Upper Compton has a waiting list. There are no available hangers in our area. The airports have had a service. So we have quite a few people paying for that. We need to have a new fuel farm eventually constructed. That's where the gas tanks are, jet fuel and low-end fuel for piston aircraft. Our current fuel farm is in an area that's unleveled, it's an area that we have right now. It's not very well lit. It's not very suitable because an airplane needs a whole lot more room to fill up than a car bus, which we think of as a gas station. Somebody pulls in a medium-sized jet, they need quite a bit of area to turn the jet around with a tub, and we are short on that area. So we need to move our fuel farm to a different area. The taxiway extension I mentioned too would get us quite a bit more commercial hanger space available. And down the road, we have plans if available to build a new terminal building, which would sit with the Fitzgerald hanger in 2013 now. So that's all I've got. Just want to bring you up to speed on a little history of the airport and current projects. You can always contact me and ask me questions. And I also have a ranger here, I'm not here, our project coordinator. Do you have any questions for him?
Thank you, Jason. Job well done. Great report of the airport and great update that you have done. Is there any questions for Mr. Duke? Okay, job well done, Jason. Thank you very much for that very thorough update. So next, let me go back. Is, is Mr. Ray Evans, is he on Zoom call or, excuse me, conference call?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead, Ray. We got you loud and clear.
Yes, sir. Sorry for the, the lack of, of audio presence. I have four things tonight. First, here's an update on our T-DOT multi-vehicle access grant project. Don't recall that that is for the side of construction down East Main Street and East Broad Street. We have received a draft final construction plan from the consultant. We have reviewed those and submitted comments to the consultant. They are reviewing those now. I hope to get a response, hopefully by the end of this week. Still anticipating the spring of 2021 construction in that area. Second grant is a T-DOT facilitation alternative program grant for improvement ground. The courthouse itself, the courthouse plaza. The committee has selected less design of man to provide the services. We are intended to, uh, work less and what we bring back to this board in January in contract. Do, uh, the first design to, um, that construction work. Uh, excuse me, uh. Trying to think of other items. So, uh, one item that we have for tonight is a, uh, is a proposal from the Upper Compton Family Justice Center to open a facility in Livingston. And they are looking at Mayor Hayes about the possibility of any public space might be available. The call that we have, the, uh, the former Twin Lakes building on South Turk Street, that we have an exit along from this, uh, Twin Lakes Ford. We have some restrictions on, on that building, things that we can and cannot use the building for. One of the restrictions is that we consider cannot make a profit on the thing that we use the building for. So, uh, the mayor and the Family Justice Center had some initial conversations. They met with the downtown revitalization committee last Friday, had a great discussion with them. And as a result, we are recommending to the board, Mayor Alderman, that the city of Livingston proceed with a Dover lost lease with that route for that facility, which will be compliant then with our requirement of Twin Lakes. The Family Justice Center would make any and all improvements to facilitate their costs. Uh, as a, so it's a, uh, an HVAC, uh, unit, basically installed at their, at their cost. Anything else they would propose to do would be at their cost as well. So the committee unanimously recommended, uh, that, uh, the board, Mayor Alderman, authorized the mayor to proceed with a, a license that's worth, uh, we think that it would be a tremendous asset to our community. Frankly, I actually already thought that even more so than they, because they have been in the last day or two. Set a few more than that.
Thank you, Ray. And as, as Ray has talked about here, I, I have met on several occasions, Ms. Brittany Shaw and Amy Stockwell, both of Upper Compton Family Justice Center. And I met today, we also met today with the chief of police, Captain Ray Smith, and CEO slash president, Mr. Jonathan West from Twin Lakes. And they was all tickled to be able to have this in Livingston. I had one over with Brittany and Amy that has, Ray, I don't want to sound redundant, but the city. Excuse me. The city would be up no expense to this building at all. All the expense, they would simply.
What was, what was the fact of the judge, explained that, uh, you're my.
Yeah, we're about to go with that just meant, but I just wanted to make, be really clear that the city of Livingston will have no expense in this at all. They will be responsible internally for the building and externally for the building as well. They understand that, as Ray has said. There's several things that, that need some work, and I think they want to change some things for their respects. TWLX has, has gave us the pencil, okay? I think their board meets next week. But we are under a 20-year lease agreement with TWLX. And again, as Ray said, we cannot use that building for any profit. So with us from Upper Compton Family Justice Center is Ms. Amy Stockwell and Ms. Brittany Shaw. And I'm going to turn it over to them and let them give just a quick briefing on exactly what their business does. a quick briefing on exactly, uh, what their, uh, business does and how it can help over the counties and others. Thank you. Now, Amy?
Hi, I'm Amy Stockwell, I'm the director of the Upper Cumberland Family Justice Center, and thank you all so much for having us considering this option, um, as a location for us. What the Family Justice Center does, we provide one location for victims of domestic violence, elder abuse, sexual assault, and some child abuse to come to. So wonderful agencies in the Upper Cumberland that provide services to these victims and survivors, but we're just providing that way, we have the doors open and the lights on, so that they can walk in at their convenience without an appointment, and somebody will be there to help them, and then we use our partner agencies will come and provide those services at the Family Justice Center, so that protects them on a lot of obstacles that our clients face as far as transportation and, you know, knowledge and resources and things like that. So the simple thing is, we need some doors to keep open and some lights to keep on, and our grant is funded through state, is paid for not through taxes, but by funds selected from offenders that are found to be guilty. So, um, one part of that is that they don't, um, the Office of Criminal Justice Programs prefers to put those grants into a community that is supporting the project, so this would help very much, um, on future grants to show that, yes, the community is support, is supportive of the Family Justice Center, and this is a project that they want. So it, it answers two of our, of our big problems. So, um, I'll just, I'll leave it at that, and if you all have any questions, I'm one happy to answer them.
David, I, I don't know if you got to hear all of that, but, uh, uh, is there any question?
Uh, our, our, uh, is for child abuse, you have, uh, that got one?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Yeah, abso- absolutely. Uh, is there board members, do you have any questions, uh, from Ms. Stockwell, Alderman
Uh, thank you, Ms. Stockwell, for that presentation, one quick question, um, where, where else in Upper Cumberland do you have, um, bringing more facilities?
We started our first grant with a word in two thousand thirteen, and so we have an office in Pettin County that, um, we opened in July first, two thousand and fifteen. Um, and so from our experience there, we found that some of our isolated counties that weren't, um, as, as effectively too, were Clay and Pickett and then Overton. So that's why when we had the opportunity to apply for a, what we called at the time satellite office, um, we just opened it in Overton County, and Brian Dunaway was planned to be here tonight, he is not feeling well, but he's the chairman of our board, and that was sort of his call too, um, that he thought Overton would be the next, the best location for our next center. We are the only center in Tennessee right now who is trying the, the multi-location model, so if it works out, then yay for us.
Right, well, and is your organization a, um, a profit?
We actually are funded through Pettin County Government. So these grants were justice assistance grants initially, and so they needed to go through a city or a county entity, and so our county was kind enough to, um, allow us to apply for the grants through there. Actually, it was Amy Dean's mom who helped us arrange that, so shout out to her, but that was in two thousand thirteen, so.
So how many staff do you anticipate having in this place of communication? Just curious.
Well, we'll have two permanent full-time staff.
Okay.
And then we have one person that is a coordinated community response specialist, and they'll work between both centers. So they're responsible for, for teams that are available for partners when we look at dispute cases and systemic problems and all that. That, that's the other part of the Family Justice Center, there's the direct service part, and then that systemic change piece, so.
Now, I would assume that y'all work very closely with the, um, you know, little courts?
We do. Right now, um, the sheriff in Everett County was nice enough on this today, so we're actually in the Justice Center, um, behind the small courtroom right now, so it's been very convenient, but it's just a little tight.
Good, well, thank you very much.
Sure, thank you.
This is Dr. Bob, Amy, thank you, and the other two who are on here. Look, I, I missed this earlier, how many, uh, how many beds, what, what do you anticipate your capacity being?
Well, what we would do, look, we don't, we don't provide shelter because Genesis House does that, but if somebody needs emergency shelter, they come in and then we would refer them to Genesis House. So we just need an office that has space where partners can meet with them. Like Legal Eddie usually keeps office hours at the Family Justice Center, and then Genesis House offices are in with ours, I think they would be in Overton County as well. Um, but we have a lot of shared partners that, in all the counties like we do, so I think it would be a, a perfect fit as far as that, but the numbers that we, this year, we're a total year, we helped ninety-five individual unduplicated families in Overton County, and that does include some numbers from Pickett and Clay, but the majority of those are, are Overton County. So, um, they're actually a little more business than that, because normally a client will come in, process services like order protection, or emergency housing, or transportation to get out of a bad situation, um, but then they'll come back for other services after that, if that makes sense. I think we helped seven hundred and, um, seven hundred and twenty-eight, no, seven hundred and seventy-two unduplicated families altogether as the Upper Cumberland Family Justice Center, so that includes the numbers for Overton, Pickett, and Clay last year.
And thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any other questions for Ms. Stockwell? Okay, Ray, do you have any other, uh, items?
Uh, yes, sir, we have a lot of information items in there here, it's a, uh, a grant that, uh, we have received, uh, through the, uh, standardization, the exact name of the organization, but it is a first grant that will allow, uh, business owners, uh, the opportunity to, uh, put some weight, uh, excuse me, to put some deals on the side of their, uh, buildings, and I'm going to add, and cancel to, uh, the deals, uh, a detail on, uh, on that grant program and, and what the legal status.
Okay, can y'all hear me okay? I apologize if, um, my call or makes a little noise in the background, it'll be a little difficult, so I'll do the best I can. Um, so we met last Friday and discussed the, um, the Artsville Community Grant, uh, we have five applicants, and we as a group determined the two best locations for these murals. So we have chosen, um, one sixteen West Court Square, which is Lindeterry's Building, it's the AC squared bakery, and, um, one hundred North Court Square, which is their cores building, and that is the Bucers Palace, where Bucers Palace too, and the store is currently. We felt those two locations had the best visibility and would potentially help tourism the most as far as bringing people into our downtown square. Um, our next step is to, of course, I've not even spoke with these two, so if they're watching this live during the night, they're just now learning about it, but, um, we will assign them with the artist, with the World Innovation Center, and set, we're in conversations with an artist that they've chosen for us right now to, uh, determine if they're a good fit, um, but we'll get them together with the artist, and they will, um, develop a design, and hopefully we should be able to bring designs for your approval in our February, February meeting.
Thank you, does anyone have any questions for Ms. Cantrell or Mr. Evans? If not, Ray, do you have any other business? All right, so, uh, we want to take two votes on this, first vote will be, uh, to accept the downtown revitalizations, uh, appointment, uh, on the renting out, leasing out, uh, the TWLX building to Upper Cumberland Family Justice Center, uh, as recommended by the DRC. Is there a motion?
Dr. Bob, so move.
Motion made by Alderman Clough, is there a second?
Alderman Dale, second.
Second by Alderman Rex Dale, any discussion? Okay, we'll do a real call, Ms. Phillips, please.
Alderman Coleman?
Yes.
Alderman Dale?
Alderman Dale, yes.
Pastor Mayor Dotson?
Mayor Dotson, yes.
Alderman Harper?
Alderman White, yes.
Alderman Spatt?
Alderman Spatt, yes.
Alderman Clough?
Alderman Clough, yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next would be a vote, uh, to accept the murals, uh, that Ms. Cantrell has presented. Is there a motion?
I want to say to Ray, whoever's above the, the city, the new city courthouse square, Christmas, um, decorations are very well there.
Thank you. There's a motion made by Alderman Spatt, is there a second?
Alderman Dale, second.
Second made by Alderman Clough, any discussion? Real call vote, Ms. Phillips, please.
Alderman Dale?
Alderman Dale, yes.
Pastor Mayor Dotson?
Pastor Mayor Dotson, yes.
Alderman Harper?
Alderman White, yes.
Alderman Spatt?
Alderman Spatt, yes.
Alderman Clough?
Alderman Clough, yes.
Alderman Coleman?
Alderman, Alderman, yes.
All right, motion's passed, so Shannon, I, I would, Ms. Cantrell would advise you go ahead and, uh, reach out to, uh, the folks that have been approved, and, uh, John, uh, I guess, can you get with the TWLX attorney, please, and try to come up with some kind of, uh, lease agreement, uh, with the city, TWLX, and Upper Cumberland Family Justice Center, please? All right, thank you, John. All right, uh, going to item number three, uh, we have Mr. David Darnell, uh, from the Highlands, David, are you with us?
Yes, sir, sir.
Go ahead and take off, Mr. Darnell.
Yes, sir, we do, thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you all for allowing us to join you all this evening. Uh, Mayor, it's nice to have pretty frequent contact with what we do in the Highlands Economic Partnership. I'm pretty sure that everyone here has heard our presentations in the past, uh, but just to give you a quick overview, uh, Highlands Economic Partnership focuses specifically on economic and community development, workforce development, education, and legislative advocacy for the Upper Cumberland, uh, four counties specifically being Funnum, White Overton, and Jackson County. Um, in this session, what we thought would be best would be two things, one would be to introduce Amy New, the newest, uh, member of our team, the CEO of the Chamber of Cookville, I say she's been, but just to let you know, it's a little sounding thing, um, but she is the new leader at the helm of the organization, and to let her speak a little bit about legislative advocacy, and then after that, we'll have Caitlin Salio, our regular workforce development and education, give you an update on that program as well, uh, so without further ado, I'll let Amy come up and bring it in with the legislative advocacy.
Great, thank you, David, and thank you, Mayor Hayes, for allowing us to, to present to all the Aldermen who, um, are taking time out of their day. One, you guys are dedicated to what you do every day, and I think it is absolutely awesome, and I have enjoyed listening to all this. One, in particular, listen to Jason talk about the airport, I've flown into the airport many times, and I've always wondered how in the world such, I mean, it's a beautiful airport, by the way, and I would love to know a little bit more about the Bill Watt Lane and Long Street, and seeing who owns those properties, if those could be potential, um, industrial sites in the future. Uh, so I definitely want to talk to Jason about that. But, um, I will say that, uh, one, just David said he doesn't already heard a little bit more, or a little bit about the economic spell in the area, because we need to improve on our team, but we'll hear from Caitlin about education and workforce, but one thing in particular that I want to, uh, really make sure that you all know is that something that we'll really be focusing on right now is legislative advocacy and, um, and in general advocacy to the governor's administration and cabinet, meeting with all of those commissioners, deputy commissioners, dispute commissioners, to make sure that they know what we have going on in the Highlands region and what our needs are. Um, and so that's why, again, if there is anything with the airport, with the new, uh, the way that the grants are working out with ninety-five-five, or with Amy, who just worked on, um, a natural working order in Overton, Pickett, or Clay, but those are all things that we can say to the administration or to those who are making these decisions and studies, to, uh, be able to talk about the needs. So, um, and as I said, we'll be meeting with, and I think you want, picturing from our team who is leading up our community development efforts and our legislative advocacy, we'll be meeting with Mayor Hayes, and hopefully, hopefully with, um, our county mayor in Overton County at some point, talk about ways that we can carry those needs and those messages on to, um, state capitals. We'll be doing it a little bit different this year, in past years, we've had a day on the hill, where we've gone, we, we met with all the, um, officials of the department, our legislators, those who are chairmen of different committees. This year, we won't be doing it very different, it won't be actually zoom, and then we'll be doing some in-person, Shane, I think that sweet baby, um, she's so cute, but we won't be doing most of the meeting in person, and, uh, we'll be having a couple one-on-ones with Lieutenant Governor Randy Malley, cabinet man, Rob Holden, again, when I was dead, we did, uh, we made a trip, stopped in the Upper Cumberland region, went back to Overbridge one night, because he was so anxious to be hearing what was going on with the Highlands Economic Partnership, but that said a lot, um, because he knows how, how strong this group is. So I just wanted to, one, talk about legislative advocacy, but one of the biggest things to talk about what we're doing in education and workforce for Overton County, um, so.
Thank you, Amy, and thank you, everyone, for letting me join tonight, this is my first time, um, in this new role. Me and Amy also, I'm excited to share, um, just a quick high-level overview of what we do for our workforce programs, and you and Overton County is currently involved in that, and kind of plans for growth in the future. Um, some of you may have met with Lillian Parkgrove, she was in this position previously, and retired in March of this year, so I took over as director of the Workforce Development and Education Program, work for the Highlands. Um, and in a nutshell, what we do is partner with K-12s, education, post-secondary education partners, area employers, and other agencies in our communities to build a pipeline of students that are entering career pathways that lead to high-advanced, higher-wage jobs across the region. Um, we do this through our program of work, um, that supports students through college and career exposure and repairment programs, so we do this through career fairs, work-based learning opportunities. In fact, I have, um, a student from Livingston Academy that is interning with me right now, um, in communications and marketing, and she is doing a phenomenal job. Next thing is her next week, or her last week, and I might cry, honestly, she's been that great, so we'd love being able to work with schools on our base learning opportunities. We host job fairs that allow students to, um, in practice interviews with area employers, but it also gives them an opportunity to find part-time employment or summer work, um, in between college courses or following high school graduation. We, um, we will connect schools with guest speakers that talk about careers in the area, career journeys, where they started, where they ended up, um, but overall, we just want to engage students very early on with education and career opportunities, and for them to understand what our labor market looks like in our area and the education that's required for them to obtain those jobs. We do this, um, by working very closely with our economic development team to stay informed about what the needs are currently, but also what are some of those that they're looking at, so businesses they're bringing into the area, how can we have, give our schools the advantage that edge to know the programs and needs, training and education programs that they need to offer, to make sure that our students are being prepared, um, to enter the workforce, back based on what those jobs are. And I'm excited in this role to start working more closely with those industry partners and understanding what their greatest needs are, um, to help those who are currently in the workforce or those preparing to enter the workforce, um, to be more highly trained, so we can fill these skills and train... So we can fill any skills and training gaps that our workforce is currently experiencing. I do want to mention a few people that we do work with closely in Overton County. So the Director of Overton County Schools, Dr. William Ham, he serves on our Workforce Development and Education Steering Committee, which oversees all of our program of work for the workforce division. Dr. Meyer West, President of TCAT, she is the Chair of that committee. And she also serves on each of our Career Pathways Committees. And if she does this, she sends someone in her place from TCAT. CTE Director Teresa Johnson, she serves on each of our Career Pathways Committees and will fill in at any time that Dr. William Ham cannot do in the steering committee meeting. And we also have all state representatives on each of our committees that we offer, as well as Livingston Regional serves on our healthcare committee. So we definitely have a lot of great representatives from Overton County that help guide our work and inform our work across our partner counties. A couple of programs that I want to quickly highlight, one because it's, one of them is getting ready to take place in 2021, and the other because it's fairly new and I'm not sure if you've heard about it. White Plains Highlands is a nonpartisan program that we started in 2019 to offer young professionals throughout our partner counties opportunities to engage in networking opportunities, community engagements, volunteering in the area, and professional development. And the goal of this program is really to involve young professionals deeply, more deeply in our community so that they continue to live here, work here, and invest in the area. We want to make sure that we are developing young professionals early on so that as our more seasoned professionals retire, we have people filling those roles and growing in the community. And then the last program that I would like to mention in more detail is Highlands Leaders. I'm sure, Amy, you have heard of that program. It is a program that we, this year unfortunately we had to cancel. So we're going to start out 2021 doing our Highlands Leaders program virtually with the hope that we can transition to in-person. But it is a program developed to encourage junior leaders who will support economic development in the region. And so our seminars do cover economic development, workforce development and education, legislative advocacy, healthcare, tourism, quality of life, and community engagement. So we are currently accepting nominations for that program in 2021. We're going to plan to kick off in February. And it takes about three to four months, depending on how long we want to stretch out that program to complete. So if you know anyone in Overton County that you would like to nominate to be part of that program, we encourage you to do so. You can call me at the Chamber and we'll get that process started for you. And then one final thing I want to mention on behalf of the whole Highlands team. We are starting something new this year under Amy's leadership, and that is listening to words. And so the goal of that, these are designs based on a desire that each community that would do this was with the goal of meeting with the city and county officials, chambers of commerce, education partners, employers in the area, hospitality partners, and anyone else that the group feels needs to come to the table. And we want to have these intentional conversations around the needs of each county and how the HEP can support their goals. So we did this really awesome job of collaborating across our counties. But we also want to make sure that we're not missing out on some of those very specific individual needs. And so we've been working with Mayor Hayes to schedule that. Unfortunately, we've had to do some rescheduling this month. But we're planning to reach out and do that in Overton County in early January or February of 2021. So we're excited to come to Overton County tour, listen, and hear how we can better partner with the county and the city of Livingston. I'm really looking forward to meeting each and every one of you at some point, hopefully in person, sitting around in the later. But if you have any questions, feel free to reach out or ask now on the phone. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Darnell. Thank you, Ms. New. Thank you, Ms. Caitlin, for that. Does anybody have any questions for the Highlands? Well, again, thank you and congratulations.
Mayor, real quick, I just want to add something I have to. I've got a rag on Shannon going away. Shannon has a lot of fans at the Cookville Chamber. We're big fans of her. You guys have an asset in her. She has reached out to us and has asked for help. We do the best we can to help her. She has a passion for the community and making sure that things continue to prosper and grow. We're very impressed with her and her goal. So shout out to you, Shannon, and then her job thus far. We appreciate the partnership once she's done the work for us.
Thank you. Okay, board members, any questions? All right, thanks for that update, Highlands. Next, we have item number four on the agenda, property maintenance update. Mr. Christian Mansel. Christian?
Good evening, folks. This is a update on our property maintenance on several of our codes. On our miscellaneous code, it's Title 13 Property Maintenance Regulations, Chapter One. This was adopted by the town of Livingston on March 4th, 2019. Since that time, we've had 53 properties that were brought before the Advisory Board. Forty-six of those properties are down in compliance. Two properties right now are in violation. One property is state-owned and is in litigation where there are errors. Four of the properties were cleaned by the city, and two of the properties have had lands placed on them. On another, on the Chapter Two, Abandoned Vehicles, this is also a Title 13 Property Maintenance Regulation. It's abandoned, dismantled, and operated vehicles. This was adopted by the town of Livingston on May the 6th, 2019. Since then, we have brought 25 vehicles before the Advisory Board. Twenty-three of the vehicles are now in compliance. Two vehicles are in violation at this time. We have one vehicle that is in the hands of our designated agent and two votes. The designated agent meaning Ms. Kelly Williams. On Title 13 Property Maintenance Regulations, Chapter Four, on our Slum Clearance, this was adopted by the town of Livingston on May 6th, 2019 as well. Since then, there have been eight structures that have been considered a slum. Three of these structures are now boarded up and safe. Two have been torn down by the owners. One has been restored. And two of these properties at this time are in the hands of the designated agent, meaning Ms. Kelly Williams. Title 13 Property Maintenance Regulations, Chapter Five, Junkyards, was adopted on June the 3rd, 2019. Since then, we have no properties listed on junkyards.
Thank you, Mr. Mansel. Any questions for Mr. Mansel? Thank you for the report, Christian, thank you. Item number five is bid on the sewer plant roof. We advertised for a public bid. We got, we received one bid, TNT roofing for the amount of $7,230.53. Again, we advertised and received one bid. The bid was open on November 23rd at 11:00 a.m. And we received one bid. So this is a bid that obviously we recommend get, if I can entertain a motion to approve the bid. TNT roofing, $7,230.53. Motion made by Alderman Langford. Is there a second?
Alderman Clough, the second.
Second by Alderman Coleman. Any discussion? Roll call vote, Ms. Phillips.
Pastor Mayor Dotson?
Pastor Speaker Dotson, yes.
Alderman Lightford?
Alderman Lightford, yes.
Alderman Spatt?
Alderman Spatt, yes.
Alderman Clough?
Alderman Clough, yes.
Alderman Coleman?
Alderman Coleman, yes.
Alderman Dale?
Alderman Dale, yes.
Motion passed. Item number six, Resolution Charter Amendment. Mr. John Meadows?
Mr. Mayor, I have a quick question before you go to bed.
Yes, yes.
If our guests would like to leave the meeting, would you invite them to do so?
Absolutely not, Kelly, they have to stay.
They may, they may, I'm kidding.
They have to stay the entire time. Yeah, no. Ms. New, Ms. Stockwell, Ms. Caitlin, Ms. Cantrell, anyone that would like to leave the meeting. Mr. Darnell, you're more than welcome to leave or stay. You can thank Kelly Coleman. I was going to keep you on the hook for the remainder of this meeting. But anyway, great report. If you want to stay, you can. If you don't, you don't have to. Thank you.
I was going to say, how would they know?
All right, item number, item number, item number six is the Resolution Charter Amendment. Mr. John Meadows?
Yes, Mayor, the last city council meeting that we had, I think it was Alderman Coleman that brought up questioning why the city always, the council always obligated to hire any additional employee or ability vacancies throughout various departments of the town of Livingston. And the reason that has taken place, as spelled as required in our charter, is specifically the duties of Mayor, as well as the duties and obligations of Alderman. It's the board's responsibility to hire and fill those positions. So that's why that's been the way it's been. And it will continue to be that way even unless the Town of Livingston's charter is amended to give the mayor some authority to fill those positions. So what I have prepared is a resolution that if passed, we'd be asking our state representative or state senator to issue a legislature to amend Town of Livingston's charter. And there's two specific provisions of that. One has to do under subsection B of the mayor's responsibilities. It would allow the mayor, if by ordinance, the board decided to delegate that authority to the mayor, if the mayor's office, Mayor Hayes, or the future mayors, maybe in the future, the authority to fill those positions without having to present each employee or potential hire to the board for approval. And there's one other provision, the powers of the Board of Alderman. It says the change would be adding language to the effect that Board of Alderman, by adoption of ordinance, could give the mayor the authority to hire, fire, suspend, dismiss employees since of that nature. So the resolution is, the board gives a resolution I prepared that makes the changes necessary to delegate some authority to the mayor. Of course, now if this, if the charter is amended, I mean, it is approved, amendment takes place, the legislature does their part, then it will, again, the board will have to pass an ordinance at some point in the future to delegate that authority to the mayor. And I just want to be clear that this, the amendments that's considered important in this resolution only have to do with delegating the authority to hire and fill vacant positions, suspend, or dismiss employees without board approval. It does not in any way have any effect on the boards being the part of everybody that creates new positions and deals with budgeting new positions and the creation of new positions. This is not delegating that authority, only the authority to fill and take care of those, manage those existing positions.
Thank you, John.
John Meadows, I've got to wait.
John, David Langford.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, David.
If we amend this regulation and give the mayor higher power, higher fire, extension, whatever, does that relate to the board or the responsibility, the liability of the employee?
I don't know that whether the mayor manages this or whether the board fills the positions, any liability to the city would remain the same. I'm not sure about it.
Well, what I'm getting at is the mayor hires an employee, he's responsible for that employee. Or is the Board of Alderman responsible for that employee?
Who's responsible for the employee?
He has, he's in action, what he does.
Well, regardless of whether the board hires him or the mayor hires the employee, any employee that engages in any kind of negligence act or tortuous act, ultimately, the cities, the Town of Livingston, the main one is going to be responsible for that employee's conduct, regardless of whether the board fills a position or whether or not the board delegates that authority to the Office of Mayor or some other department to fill that position.
John, I have a question.
Yes.
The way I understand it now is that the mayor has the authority to terminate an employee. You know, there's costs, of course. He has the responsibility, or she has the responsibility to supervise, to manage, and terminate it. Isn't that correct?
Now, let's look at your mayor's ability to instruct and direct officers. That's under, it's on C-17, that charter.
The mayor is facing, is facing the flowing across from the board or the term of his service.
Go ahead, John. Thank you, David. Go ahead, John.
Under that provision of the charter, it currently states that the mayor is the immediate supervisor of all of the Livingston's officers, supervisors, and employees. The mayor's orders and directions are to be followed and obeyed by all officers, supervisors, and employees. The only exception is this telegraphy order or direction from the mayor officer. Her employee will result in an illegal, let us say, bad act. Oh, that is such for exception, any officers, supervisors, or employees will fail to obey an order or direction from the mayor's guilty against protection. Such officers, supervisors, or employees will be subject to suspension or dismissal from employment by the Board of Alderman. So that fills with termination and suspension. Then there's another provision under the responsibility of Alderman. And that's on C-18, section four of the Board of Alderman. Says the Board of Alderman shall have full power and authority to appoint and elect all officers, servants, and agents of the corporations that are necessary in a fixed payment composition. They have the power to discharge any officer or agent. All agencies and the board, mayor, officer.
Okay, I hear what you're saying. Just in practice, doesn't our mayor, doesn't he terminate employees? If there's a reason to terminate a employee?
Yeah, Kelly, normally, if I can answer that, normally, in the past, I don't know if you can hear me or not, but normally, in the past, Kelly, we, in the event that there needs to be some disciplinary actions, took the, I have in the past, if needed, and very few times actually, suspended employees. And if they need to go to the board for termination, then the board normally is the ones that terminate them according to the charter. So I have suspended, but as far as actually termination, now, obviously, if the employee decides to quit, then it's case closed. But in the event that they want to appeal my decision, then they have the right to go to the Board of Alderman. And that's, we've not had that because, I mean, it's just not something we do. I mean, it's there if we need it, but we try not to go that route unless we need to. So I hope that answers your question.
Okay, I've got another question, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
What's the problem? Why are we going to, if Alderman wants to change?
Well, Alderman Coleman brought this up. You might want to talk to him. Kelly?
What's the problem? What seems to be the problem? Well, David, what, what seems to be the problem?
I don't know that I would classify it specifically as a problem. I ask the question out of, uh, curiosity, because I was under the impression that our mayor was the immediate supervisor and manager of all city employees. Um, in my two and a half years on the board, every time that a new position or an existing position has needed to be filled, uh, he most recently was the police department, those always come before the board, and we hear the candidate, we hear all about their credentials, and I was just curious, what is efficient about that? If the mayor position is the manager and supervisor of the employees, and has full authority to manage employees, terminate an employee, et cetera, why does the board need to approve, um, a, a new hire? Uh, I ask the question out of curiosity. So, to me, it, it seems not very efficient if you've got a, a leader of the town who has authorized to manage and supervise his employees, but yet he can't fill an open position or a budgeted position, um, with a qualified candidate that hits or her choosing. Um, I just ask the question, because I was curious, what's the rationale behind that?
Well, here, here's my thing, though, I don't have a problem with the mayor, uh, finding out somebody's new position, bringing you from the board that's approved, and not taking the great punishment. One reason is I wanna know who he is. When I see somebody going down the highway in a city vehicle, I wanna let you know that I've seen him before. And if somebody asks me, I wanna be able to give a name. Okay, number two, I want to get to know the line. I mean, uh, I'm not, uh, want to make it hard on anybody, but I mean, I want to know the line. I also wanna know what went about this, uh, head of the way. They speak to the movement in there, the movement, that we don't have a third decision, why? And to be honest with you, I don't know why, that we don't give a second, that's obvious, that's a hard one. So I mean, I don't understand.
Thank you, uh, Alderman, is there any other discussion?
I have a question, old club, I have a question. Those are yearly turnover of, of city employees, rostering.
Ooh, uh, that's a toughie, I mean, uh, obviously, uh, you know, I don't throw any department under the bus, but, it, you know, it, it, or local law enforcement, uh, police department is, is the one that loses the most employees, uh, by far. Uh, as far as maintenance, uh, we're fortunate that, uh, a high percentage of our employees stay here till retirement. Uh, there is, uh, from time to time, uh, some employee may quit and go to another job, but, I mean, Phyllis, what would be the number? You, you're probably, you're probably talking of two or three or four a year in, in maintenance, uh, including, uh, water plant, wastewater plant, airport parks, uh, in the police department, you know, you probably have, uh, Greg, what did you say, six or seven from time to time?
Depends on the year.
You know, depends on the year. So you're not talking about a, a whole group of, of new employees, and I'm okay with whichever the board wants to do, I mean. Uh, sure, would it be simpler, uh, for us here in a budgeted, uh, year, if an employee, uh, is already budgeted in, to go ahead and put someone to work, uh, uh, instead of waiting to the, uh, month they made it? Sure, no question about that. Uh, but, you know, it's, it's at the discretion of the board, um, we don't have a whole, thank goodness, uh, we don't have a whole long-term career, and I'm, I'm proud of that, and it's a good place to work. Uh, from time to time, uh, we have employees that find other posi, uh, another, another job in another city or another county, especially law enforcement, and they leave, and that's what Greg, is Chief Etheridge has run up against on several times, and we make great leaps and bounds when we pass the pay scale. That's just, we make great strides when we do that, and, uh, and in the result of it, as far as maintenance, I think maybe we've lost one employee since then, now, in, uh, public safety, and as far as law enforcement. I think this is probably about the fourth one that Greg has brought before us.
Thanks. Has the, one, and a follow-up question directed to Mr. Meadows. If we approve the, the request to send, uh, an amendment to the charter, it still comes back to the Board of Aldermen to create a new ordinance making this the way we operate in the future? And if we do that, is it then up to the discretion of the board to reverse that sometime in the future without re-amending our charter?
Yes, I think the, the, these changes in this, this proposed resolution that I prepared gives the board the ability to, by ordinance, delegate the authority to manage those positions, fill in those positions to the mayor's office, okay? The, the Board of Aldermen would have to pass an ordinance, and have to go through the process, and have to be a first reading and a second reading if it passed. In the future, that ordinance could be repealed.
Okay.
People are bored, actually, by an ordinance to repeal it, which you have to go through, you would have to go through the charter and then the process, but there would have to, have to be the first and second reading.
So, so, so if we did this, this would actually give us more autonomy as a board in how to manage our own city, without having to go, basically, get permission from the state to change the way we do something as simple as giving the mayor the power to hire and fire?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have to tell.
Thank you, I have a quick question, too, and I've only been on the board for a short time, the mayor did want to, some of yours. But to your knowledge, as a group, has this board, has the board mayor and Alderman ever declined to hire an employee that was, uh, brought before by the mayor?
Yeah.
Has the mayor recommended to hire an employee and the board voted against it?
No, not that I can remember, but now, I, I'd have to go back and search them all, but I, I've, I've been, I've been here.
So I understand what it is, it's, it's, I think it's valid, and that is to know who's employee in the city. You know, I think it's important, we all know who works for the city. But, I mean, I, I would think a, a very simple remedy to that would be, if there's a new hire, it gets reported to the board at the next meeting, right? I mean, isn't that a simple remedy, and then you give a, you give, you give an update to the board on any new hires? That would be part of our ordinance, if we chose to move in that direction, we would, we would write it into our ordinance that says, you know, you have the authority to hire employees, since you're gonna be managing and supervising, but if you do so, then you're required to report to the board who was hired, in what position, and tell us about the matter.
Absolutely, and, and that's called executive action.
So we, we have that choice to write those wishes, basically, that we might have into a future ordinance, should we choose to go there. Is that correct, John?
Yes, okay.
Thank you.
John, this is Alderman David, I have a question. Do, how do other communities plus us do this process? Are they, you sure they do the mayor, or like us, do the board of aldermen?
To be honest with you, I don't know what all the other cities around us do. Uh, but we're just, you know, because we're a city, or we, we're operating under this charter, and we live without our charter. If it's in our charter, we have to follow it, there's no way around it, without amendment of the charter. And, um, and I'm just, I haven't looked into it the same way Cookland's charter says, or, or the, uh.
Rex, Rex, let me, let me say this, uh, it, it is, no charter is the same. Uh, right now, of course, we have an Alderman Strong charter, which means that the Aldermen, uh, simply, uh, have to find a say at the end of the day, uh, the city all good has an administrator, they have a ceremonial mayor. City of Cookland has a ceremonial mayor, uh, and a city manager. I, I, I do act as the city reporter, city manager, and mayor of Livingston. Uh, the, uh, so every, every charter, it is, is truly not a fair comparison. Either way you wanna vote, it's all right, maybe, but I'm just saying that the charters trying, you're just not getting apples for apples, is what I'm trying to say, every charter is, is different, and then, all of our private act charters, they often be changed and amended, just like, uh, the process that you're doing here, so I hope that helps you a little bit, but, it's just, it's just not apples, apples, no city is apples, apples comparison of cities.
Well, I mean, the charter was written back when, you know, like, a hundred years ago?
Right, right.
Yeah, no, it's not, it's a little different.
It is, mine, but a little different, I think, and there, there was a few other amendments, some of the provisions that I made, including, that were talked about, the Alderman being, he, he, he and I changed that to he or she, or his or her, um, I don't think we had a lot of ladies that served as Aldermen back in the day. So yeah, it's a bit outdated.
So, I wanna interject once more, um, Mr. Meadows, and that is, as it stands right now, we are bound by many of the resolutions and statements and restrictions of this charter, and if we achieve an amendment to do this, we still have the ability, like Alderman Coman said, to establish certain conditions or parameters by giving, i- if we decide to give the mayor hiring and firing power, so this is not like giving whoever the mayor is, uh, you know, a blank checkbook to do whatever they want, with no oversight, with no divisions, with no, uh, uh, you know, responsibility to the board.
It would be the responsibility of the Board of Aldermen, i- if they, let's, then this resolution passes in the legislative acts, and our charter is amended to this language, it would then get the Board of Aldermen to determine what authority, in what form, that's gonna look like when you delegate that to the mayor's office again. And in the event, since it's not ordinance, in the event, uh, a mayor, you know, if, if, uh, mayor has to go through, or some future mayor will go through, then the board still has the ability to, to repeal that ordinance, you know what I mean?
Okay.
All right, thank you.
I'd say we consider this ordinance as a yes, I make the motion to consider that in the board. And then the mayor can actually invite the new hirees to the, uh, Board of Aldermen and Mayor meeting, and then you meet them that way after you hire them. Similarly, they have to wait a whole month to hire on, when the position can be filled immediately by the mayor, and that's, that's how it works. I make the motion to approve this, and, uh, take a look, get a seat, get a look.
All right, the motion made for Alderman's spec, is there a second?
I'll say, I'll second it.
Last, Mayor Dodson seconds the motion, any discussion?
Yeah, I already got a more one. Um, John, in the ordinance, can we, would it be possible to ask them, if we, for some reason, don't agree with the hire, that we can reverse and fire that person? Or we have to repeal the ordinance, and then make the decision to, to fire that person?
Well, that, that's an interesting question.
That's an interesting question.
So, yeah, I mean, I know we've not been against this, any of this recommendation, but would it turn out point change, we do?
Yeah, uh, I would say, you know, it just, uh, without doing any more, you know, research on that particular issue, I would say that if, if there's an ordinance that's passed that, you know, grants, you know, delegates that authority to the mayor, I'm, I'm trying to see, is it possible to put some language in there that in certain situations, the board would still have to approve it? Uh, I think that the Board of Aldermen can define the terms of that authority that's delegated and the conditions, but that would be something we all would have to, to, uh, you know, put together and, and propose in, in the ordinance to, to delegate this authority. So I think, I think it's possible, I just don't know what that would look like without, you know, seeing the mechanics and the pieces of this ordinance, and, and exactly what everyone would be trying to accomplish. If you're gonna give the, if you're gonna delegate the authority, then, and then take it away, or if you want to, I don't think that's gonna work. But if you delegate the authority, but maybe there are limited exceptions to where the board would still need to be involved, where you don't delegate full authority, just a limited amount of authority, I think that's something that could be, could be cracked. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, it kinda does, the, the, it's like you said, well, you're, you know, that, um, and I don't believe, I mean, but, looking ahead in fifty years or seventy years, if somebody else gets it, maybe they hire, they want a split chief, or a fire chief, or whatever the board of aldermen is approving.
Well, and the other thing to keep in mind, the, the language in our charter, you know, any employees that are, that are terminated, uh, they, they, they have to be based upon, you know, reasonable cause. Uh, so if you're talking about a situation where somebody was hired, that just, whatever reason, uh, board would want to reject, let's say, you know, a situation where somebody has, has enough qualifications to do the job, or, or, is that what fucking meant?
Yeah, yeah, something like that.
Uh, you know, all I can tell you is that, that I think there's a possibility that, by ordinance, some limitations could be placed upon, um, you know, the authority that's delegated to the mayor, as well as what authority would be retained by the Board of Aldermen in those situations. So that'd have to be clearly defined, you know, in the language of the ordinance.
Okay.
All right.
I think you could, uh, oh, but I think we could consider things like, uh, a regi, provisional hire, uh, in my office, to do an automatic certificated time, or nothing is cast in stone, and revisited, and things would go ahead. What do you wanna call it, probationary period, or, I'm not saying you do that, I'm sure it's, I mean, it's the language that would make it, uh, both, uh, where the board felt like they had proper oversight, and, and even if there was something in there, current, future mayors would even be, you know, be, be just as careful as they are now to, um, hire the right person, uh, knowing that there is still always gonna be the oversight of the boards. I mean, we have right now, even, like, twenty now, John, if there's something that's, um, you know, illegal or untrue, or, uh, the Board of Aldermen still have the right to bring that up, and, and reverse hire, or whatever.
It, you know, it would, it would be impossible to, to foresee every scenario, the way there's a lot of their current state laws, you know, that's why they're all, laws are all bound, you know, and, etc., and, and, so, but, but I think, about, to this resolution, if the charter is amended, you know, it would, it would put the, um, you know, the board would be probable, whatever kind of ordinance would be passed, and what conditions, uh, certain sections would be placed in that ordinance.
Would those hires, if it happens, be considered executive action, and then the mayor would bring to the Alderman his reported executive actions, taken since our last meeting, and we would approve those executive actions, is that down? Is that?
They would, they would mark that again?
If, if this passed, that's exactly what would have to be there. I, I, I don't, I don't, I don't think, and I hope nobody thinks that there's any thing that, uh, that can go south here, I mean, I, if it doesn't pass, it don't pass, I mean, and we're gonna still operate the city of Livingston like I've been doing for the last fourteen years, I mean, it, but, I mean, it, it, it would be a little convenient, I think, Kelly Coman, Kelly Coman has a great point, and brought that up, so. I think Kelly Coleman, Kelly Coleman has a great point in bringing that up, so.
If, if, if this passes, that gives you the authority to hire or replace any city in the world we own. Is that correct?
Yeah, and, and, of course, every ordinance has got to have two, have a public hearing, then have a second passing, and then, uh, we're talking about a charter change and things of that nature, yes.
Just, just for clarification, Mayor, if, if this passes, all it does is, is request that the legislature take action to allow us in the charter.
Right.
That is not, nothing changes until after the fact, after that occurs, then the Board passes an ordinance.
Right.
Uh, delegate that authority to the office of Mayor. So, until, until this passes in the legislature and until the Board takes action by, by passing that ordinance, delegate that authority, thing will remain the same as they are right now.
Right. And David, to answer your question is, no, this does not allow new positions to come up.
Correct.
That's right, that's right. Any budgeted position?
Yeah, this does not affect that. If, if this passes and the ordinance is passing in the future, it still will be up to the Board of Alderman to determine, you know, for the creation of new positions.
New positions, that's not correct.
New positions, right.
All right, we have a, uh, motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? Okay, roll call, hold this for us.
Alderman Speck?
No.
Alderman Speck?
Alderman Speck, yes.
Alderman Crowe?
Alderman Club, yes.
Alderman Hellman?
Alderman Hellman, yes.
Alderman Dale?
Alderman No, no, apparently.
Bassner Watson?
I spare that's a yes.
Four yes, two no. Motion passes. Out of number seven, LPD Chief Greg Etheridge.
Uh, thank y'all. I'll be very brief. A couple of meetings ago, y'all authorized us to sell some of our surplus equipment. Um, I should have put in the, the requisition in the letter besides scrapping or gun deals. If another law enforcement agency had contacted us about a purchase in one of the items or, or, or something that we had in our inventory that was authorized. In the particular case in hand, Greendale Police Department, uh, has asked for, uh, to sell them directly, uh, one of the shower trailers and the little electric car that we've got. Uh, if y'all approve that, uh, we'd just sell it straight to Greendale PD. There's been, for some of you may not know, I mean, when I first took office, I bought stuff, uh, internally through, uh, like Allgood PD and some other agencies. They helped me out when I didn't have the assets available. So, this is, sometimes with law enforcement agencies, we try to help each other out, so.
So, is there a question for?
Yes, sir. I'd like, uh, to request to sell the shower trailer and electric car out of our, uh, surplus property that we've got already approved, uh, to the Greendale Police Department for seven thousand dollars.
All right. Uh, any questions for the chief? Motion made by Vice Mayor Ken Dodson to approve. Is there a second?
Alderman, Alderman Speck, second.
Motion ma-, uh, second by Alderman Chris Speck. Any discussion? Roll call, hold this for us.
Alderman Speck?
Alderman Speck, yes.
Alderman Club?
Club, yes.
Alderman Coleman?
Alderman Coleman, yes.
Alderman Dale?
Dale, yes.
Bassner Mayor Watson?
Bassner Mayor Watson, yes.
Alderman Nice Tree?
Wager, yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passed. No other business on the agenda. Uh, we'll, uh, take a motion to adjourn.
Go ahead.
Motion made by...
Alderman, no.
Coleman, second. Vice, I heard by Rex, Alderman Dale. Uh, any discussion? All for the mo- motion. Let it know by saying aye.
Aye.
All the codes outside, we're adjourned.